I know I said you're packing this. I'm just waiting for you.
Generally speaking, it's time. But I don't think it's like this. It's probably get through with it. You know, it's like you go through with the cross on the other side. It's like over here. It might go down. Yeah. And that's the cheese. It's bad. It's probably stuck. It's coming. We should be right there soon. We're playing.
This is days out. I'll be with you on.
This is extra.
It's just me? Okay. Just kind of hoping I can stay home.
Yeah. That's the thing. It's the best when I handle things like this.
Oh, that's a good thing for you guys.
Pick it up, please.
Um, tonight we have a special one. I think we're gonna make it four, four and a half hours. Is it about right, Harold? The time tonight, I think we're gonna make this one long.
Do you know where I'm going this way?
Probably is gonna be short.
Probably half hour to an hour. We've had, you know, some or three hours. Nothing, nothing here that's gonna make this one any more near that. Couple windbag hires, which is just to say, oh, great. Things that were all doing this, which is not. And that will take care of the business and.
I don't want to get out of here, but.
You're gonna find my class.
Ten hours. Two forty, pretty forty-five.
It's too late.
I would like to be together with my.
Yeah. What is yours? Last point, this one.
We're not together. No, we're not.
Two thousand.
They're either right there. Yes. Six years. Six years P C R. He's the first house. He's used to you.
Next door.
Lights are pretty.
Honestly.
A different light.
House, one of the twenty-two.
We were on, uh, Hollywood Street. Yeah.
They are. Oh, beautiful.
Is it on now?
Beautiful. Oh, it's only my door. Mutual. Which door?
You know, Mr. Gary.
What is every day?
How do they see it? It's nice. I understand you got a mutual friend, Kelly. Who is that? Your daughter.
She's finding the judge? What?
Really nervous.
Are you? She's talking. It looks like she's gonna fall asleep.
Picture wrong one.
Geez, something seems to be there. No, I can do it.
Scared.
Guess I'm not out. So, uh. Yeah, but you know what? That might not be sort of a bad thing either.
Hey, you're gonna have pretty. You got the agenda.
All right. Are we holding on to that? Great. We'll be defending.
Mr. Kirkland, the inspector on these resolutions? Quiz?
That's a solvency.
How exciting how it happened that I got mixed here. I wish I could have been in this place every time. I mean, I learned a lot, but it's not gonna happen.
You get the copy doing today. Okay, final.
Okay, it does the cheese.
I have to see the channel. I say, well, I'm gonna miss all of them. Find out. Put it on for next week. See if they bring him down. Thanks. And what they do is they go, they spend the whole day in certain parts. Anyway. You know, he used to work for the city. But. Personnel director of the cell. Oh, no. You're so good. He went to work for private. Well, for somewhere, I think. Or no, for. He went to work for the federal government.
Yeah. Yeah. United States of America. We are a republic of corporate standards. One nation, under God. In the name of our Lord. We have today young adults who are participating in Government Day. These are the same people in years to come. They will be our leaders and contribute to our society. Lord, bestow upon them all the blessings and guidance. Show them the right path to follow. Bestow the gift of understanding, love, honesty, respect, integrity, and fellowship. Let them never forget the needs of people. And always extend a helping hand. These are the lessons to be learned in life. Learn them all. The future is yours. Don't let it go to waste. You have so much to offer. The road to success is constantly under construction. Be equipped to challenge the many barriers. Amen.
See, let us make sure this is working. Okay, well, it's here. It's a little bit of a turn. Meeting. That's just a reading mere lesson. Just proving for you. This isn't my work. What happens if we put trash on our passports? We don't start it. They're. We serve them right. But they don't. I will. Judge. It's. Foot call roll.
Mayor Stafford.
Here.
Alderman Lincoln.
Here.
Alderman Sahaski.
Here.
Alderman Weston.
Here.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
We have half of Alderman Sherman here.
Alderman Thompson.
Yes.
Alderman Woodward.
Here.
All present except for Alderman Sherman.
At this time, would you please announce who we have with us tonight?
I'd like to announce the students that are representing the prospective department heads, Aldermen and whatnot. And if you could just stand after I mention your name. Representing Michael Stafford, our mayor, is Danielle Bennett. Representing John Crook, our executive assistant, is Gina Vono. Representing our First Ward Alderman and Council President, John Lincoln, is Nick Kelsey. Representing our Second Ward Alderman, Edward Sahaski, is Kim Wesley. Representing our Third Ward Alderman, Robert Weston, is James Murray. Representing our Fourth Ward Alderman, Mark Sherman, is Emily Landers. Representing our Fifth Ward Alderman, Harley Thompson, is Jason Fay. Representing our Sixth Ward Alderman, Ronald Woodward, Sr., Brian Van Buren. Representing our City Attorney, David Hawthorne, is Andrea Roy. Representing myself, Joseph Tietro, City Clerk, is Megan Crandall. Representing our City Chamberlain, James LaBota, is Savannah Wash. Representing our Police Chief, Mark Spahn, is Jen Rosenkran. Representing our Fire Chief, Anthony Gria, is Matt McEwen. Representing our D P W Commissioner and our Water and Sanitation Commissioner is Courtney Gerrell. Representing our Building Zoning Inspector, Mariah Ives. Representing our City Assessor, Diane Moore, is Carissa Williams. Representing our Personnel, Kathy Howsworth, is Anne Marie Sterling. And representing our City Court Judge, Spencer J. Luddington, is Rachel Nichols. Do we have a hand for her? At this time, Your Honor, I'd like to give some special thanks. First of all, we tried something tonight, today at Elks Youth Government Day that we've never tried before, and that is, we had the students here and we took them on a couple tours. So I'd like to give a special thanks to John Florrick, our Superintendent of Waterworks, who took the kids through the waterworks and showed them basically everything that happens and how the water process goes. He gave a history of the waterworks, and he did a very, very nice job. Also, Aaron Bowman. We went to the sewage treatment plant. He's a plant operator there. He took them a tour of the sewage treatment plant. I'd like to thank Roger Parsons, our Water and Sanitation Commissioner, who provided transportation and made sure we had people ready at those places to give the kids their guide. I'd like to thank Jim LaBota, our City Chamberlain, who drove around some students in a former police vehicle. One student got locked in, couldn't get out. I'd like to thank Diane Moore, our City Assessor, who provided transportation. Our Fire Chief, Anthony Gria, and the Assistant Deputy Chief, Dana Smith, who provided transportation and went along on the tour with us. Kathy Howsworth of our Personnel Department, who went on the tour. I'd like to thank John Crook, our Executive Assistant. John, at the last moment, I thought it would be nice for the kids to go down to Bullhead Point and see what is there now and what the plans are for the future for Bullhead Point. John brought down some drawings, and he went in an in-depth analysis of what's going on in that whole area and gave the kids a perspective on what's coming down the road. I'd also like to thank Larry Thompson of the Elks. Also, Mr. Fialda Malva, who always, every year, gives me great cooperation and helps put the program together. Mr. Moore, of course. Mrs. Parsons, who was there. All our department heads. Obviously, the Elks Lodge, the Aldermen. And a special thanks to all the students who are great. These kids, they're very attentive, and we had a good time with them. And especially you, Your Honor. I know that a lot of people don't know this, but the mayor was just operated on a while back, and it wasn't too long ago. And for him to get out and get up to this meeting and everything like that, I really appreciate it, and I know a lot of people don't know that, but thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Joe. On behalf of the city, I would like to publicly thank the Elks Lodge for sponsoring the Youth Government Day and for providing a very delicious meal. Again, we are learning to respect that, so that's. The cooks are very good. And I'd like to thank Joe Tietro for all the work that he put into this. We're trying to make this better every year, and I think it's worked. And I'm looking for input from the students, any ways that we could make this program any better. If you have any suggestions, please get them to myself or to Joe after the meeting. We'll make notes for next year. Thank you very much. Would anyone from the Elks care to speak in regards to this program?
I'm Mark Stan Jackson. On the Exalt Road of the Elks Lodge, and, uh. The Elks are a youth organization that we specify mostly on you, on any way that we can. We have soccer shoes, hoop shoe. We also dedicate our time a lot to C P and National Foundation. It is the honor and the pleasure, of the whole Elks, to participate in the Youth Government Day and to thank our junior citizens of our community for their outlook towards the future of our community. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item one. Resolved that the minutes of a common council meeting held on April 4th, 2000 are hereby approved. Do I hear motion?
I move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Our timing is a destroyer.
We're gonna time you a little bit.
But the message, the message is writing is the timing.
Okay. So that was.
We're in favor.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Question carried. Item two.
Whereas by memo from Commissioner Graham to the City Clerk dated April 19th advising the expenditure of city funds, material labor, and equipment described as follows. Property owned by Kevin Blazinski, 721 Seneca Street. Total expenditure by the city of $100.
How about we are? We are for that, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion? Motion by Sixth Ward. Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Now, standard two or three? Item three.
Whereas by memo from D P W Commissioner Graham, the City Clerk dated April 19th advising that expenditures of city funds, material labor at the premises at 209 Beach Street and the owner, Michael J. Calley, in the amount of $100.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item four. Notation that the reappointment by Mayor Stafford of Joseph Langlos of 111 West 3rd Street in Fulton, New York, to the Plumbing and H V A C Board effective immediately and expiring December 31st, 2002, is hereby entered into the minutes of this common council meeting of May 2nd, 2000 as a matter of record. Item five. Resolved that the reappointment by Mayor Stafford of Kenneth Patrick, Jr. of 60 South Pallard Jive, Fulton, New York, 13069, to the Planning Commission effective February 15th, 2000, and expiring February 14th, 2003, is hereby approved. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item six.
Just before we do item six, just to let the students know, as you noticed, the first of two resolutions that were just read, one was a notation, and you saw there was no vote. What that indicates is that is an appointment that can be made by the mayor without council approval. The second one, which required a vote, is an appointment that he can make, but it still needs council approval. So if you see a notation versus another appointment, that's the difference. Okay. You're up.
Yep. Just. Resolve that the reappointment by Mayor Stafford of Al Gideo Fiorini of 616 West 4th Street, Fulton, New York, 13069, to the Planning Commission effective February 15th, 2000, and expiring February 14th, 2003, is hereby approved.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item seven.
Resolved that Chapter 165, subsection 16552, Schedule 8, entitled Stop Intersection, is hereby amended to read as follows. Delete stop sign on Fay Street, direction of travel both at intersection of South 6th Street. Add stop sign on South 6th Street, direction of travel both at the intersection of Fay Street.
I move that.
This is to correct.
Right.
All right. This, uh. This resolution is to correct an error that had been made in the past in the, uh, in the code. This is the way it actually is at this point in time, has been. That's the reason for the resolution.
Motion?
I move that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item eight. Resolved that the property is located at 501 East Broadway, owned by Daniel and Denise Abel, and 520 Utica Street, owned by Fode Hassan, and 702 Emery Street, owned by Mike Siver. Be referred to the Fulton Planning Commission for its recommendation on proposed driveways and parking within the city right of way.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item nine.
Added to this resolution is a petition from the neighborhood given to me by the mayor, which is attached to the resolution.
4501 East Broadway.
I'm gonna read to there.
Whereas, at a meeting of the common council held on April 4th, 2000, the City Clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting on May 2nd, 2000, at 7:00 PM in the common council chambers in the municipal building located at 141 South 1st Street, Fulton, New York, relative to a proposed local law which would replace Section 177, 41A of the Fulton City Code regarding residency requirement through zoning board of appeals members. Mayor Stafford will now declare his public hearing open.
Well, it appeared, or came to our attention that, uh, this is on the zoning board, right? The zoning board of appeals had no residency requirement. There are other sections of our code, particularly our charter, which refers to all city officials being city residents, but where the city official is defined, it does not include zoning board of appeals members. It's felt that people making these type decisions should reside in the city. That's why this proposed local law is in front of us to require that anybody being on the zoning board of appeals lives in the city. It's a change in the law as written now to reflect that.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would care to comment on this? Anyone on the council? Do we not declare the public hearing, uh, what, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas members of the council, members of the public, and all in attendance, were given an opportunity to express their written or oral comments regarding said proposed local law. Now therefore be resolved that the proposed local law which would require members of the zoning board of appeals to be residents of the city of Fulton, New York, is hereby approved.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, this would be the same thing. Appreciate your.
Whereas, at a meeting of the common council held on April 4th, 2000, the City Clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of May 2nd, 2000, at 7:00 PM in the common council chambers in the municipal building located at 141 South 1st Street, Fulton, New York, relative to a proposed local law which would amend Chapter 20, subsection 22 of the Fulton City Code regarding residency requirements for planning commission members. Mayor Stafford will now declare this public hearing open.
This item came on the agenda, the same as the zoning board of appeals, as there was nothing in the code previously requiring that the residency requirement for planning commission members. It was felt that since the planning commission is dealing with the future of our city, that it should be made up of city residents. Anybody in the audience care to comment on this proposal? Anyone on the council?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Collaborate? Move it. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Now therefore be resolved, proposed local law which would require members of the planning commission to be residents of the city of Fulton, New York, is hereby approved.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Now therefore be resolved, proposed local law which would require members of the planning commission to be residents of the city of Fulton, New York, is hereby approved.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 11.
Whereas, at a meeting of the common council held on April 4th, 2000, the City Clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of May 2nd, 2000, at 7:00 PM in the common council chambers in the municipal building located at 141 South 1st Street, Fulton, New York, relative to a proposed local law which would amend Chapter 147, subsection 147 to 11 of the Fulton City Code entitled Unsafe Substances. Mayor Stafford will now declare this public hearing open.
Yes, recently it became necessary to possibly enforce this law which prohibits someone from placing an unsafe substance on a street. And so doing between myself and the police department, there was differing interpretations as to what exactly our law which was passed in 1978 was meant to regulate, and it was basically had to do with some clauses and whether they were meant to regulate, whether these clauses refer to certain nouns within this paragraph or not. This just certainly cleans up that language. The other thing that we did here was add a new section which can make a business owner accountable, excuse me, if his or her business causes a dangerous condition to be created in the street.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience care to comment on this proposed change to law? Anyone on the council? It's gonna work toward it. Do we not? Motion to close the public.
Motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Now therefore be resolved that proposed local law which would amend Chapter 147, subsection 147-11, entitled Unsafe Substances, is hereby approved.
Motion?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Right?
Is there anyone in the audience that has any business to brief before the council?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Joe Cavalero. I reside at 303 South 5th Street and have come to talk about the issue of the proposed driveway or off-street parking at 501 East Broadway at Denise Abel's Beauty Shop. It's come to my attention that the driveway was, or I should say, the right-of-way was paved, apparently at the approval of a city official. Now, these people have received the notice that what they have done is not in accordance with the code, and has now been referred to the planning commission. I guess my question is, why was it okayed in the first place instead of referred to the planning commission as it should have been? Because this situation is not unsimilar to the dentist's office on 3rd and Broadway. Dr. Panko, forgive me if I'm pronouncing that correctly, and her husband, John Forello. What is the difference in this situation with the beauty shop versus the doctor's office?
The difference is, at the time that Dr. Panko requested that, we did not have ordinance in regards to the, uh.
Item eight. Resolved that the property is located at 501 East Broadway, owned by Daniel and Denise Abel, and 520 Utica Street, owned by Fode Hassan, and 702 Emory Street, owned by Mike Siver. Be referred to the Fulton Planning Commission for its recommendation on proposed driveways and parking within the city right of way.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item nine.
Added to this resolution is a petition from the neighborhood given to me by the mayor, which is attached to the resolution.
Whereas, at a meeting of the common council held on April 4th, 2000, the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting on May 2nd, 2000, at 7:00 PM in the common council chambers in the municipal building, located at 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, relative to a proposed local law which would replace Section 177, 41A of the Fulton City Code regarding residency requirement through zoning board of appeals members. Mayor Stafford will now declare this public hearing open.
Well, it appeared, or it came to our attention that, this is on the zoning board, right? The zoning board of appeals had no residency requirement. There are other sections of our code, particularly our charter, which refers to all city officials being city residents, but where the city official is defined, it does not include zoning board of appeals members. It's felt that people making these type decisions should reside in the city. That's why this proposed local law is in front of us to require that anybody being on the zoning board of appeals lives in the city. It's a change in the law as written now to reflect that.
Is there anyone in the audience who would care to comment on this? Anyone on the council? Do you not declare the public hearing, or entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas members of the council and members of the public on all in attendance were given an opportunity to express their written or oral comments regarding said proposed local law, now therefore be resolved that the proposed local law which would require members of the zoning board of appeals to be residents of the city of Fulton, New York is hereby approved.
Motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carried. Whereas, at a meeting of the common council held on April 4th, 2000, the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of May 2nd, 2000, at 7:00 PM in the common council chambers in the municipal building, located at 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, relative to a proposed local law which would amend Chapter 20, subsection 22 of the Fulton City Code regarding residency requirements for planning commission members. Mayor Stafford will now declare this public hearing open.
This item came on the agenda, the same as the zoning board of appeals, as there was nothing in the code previously requiring that the residency requirement for planning commission members. It was felt that since the planning commission is dealing with the future of our city, it should be made up of city residents. Anybody in the audience care to comment on this proposal? Anyone on the council?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Collaborate?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Now therefore be resolved, proposed local law which would require members of the planning commission to be residents of the city of Fulton, New York is hereby approved.
Motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 11. Whereas, at a meeting of the common council held on April 4th, 2000, the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of May 2nd, 2000, at 7:00 PM in the common council chambers in the municipal building, located at 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, relative to proposed local law which would amend Chapter 147, subsection 147-11 of the Fulton City Code entitled Unsafe Substances. Mayor Stafford will now declare this public hearing open.
Yes, recently it became necessary to possibly enforce this law which prohibits someone from placing an unsafe substance on a street. In so doing, between myself and the police department, there was differing interpretations as to what exactly our law which was passed in 1978 was meant to regulate, and it was basically had to do with some clauses and whether they were meant to regulate, whether these clauses refer to certain nouns within this paragraph or not. This just certainly cleans up that language. The other thing that we did here was add a new section which can make a business owner accountable, excuse me, if his or her business causes a dangerous condition to be created in the street.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience care to comment on this proposed change to law? Anyone on the council? It's going to work toward it.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Now therefore be resolved that proposed local law which would amend Chapter 147, subsection 147-11 entitled Unsafe Substances is hereby approved.
Motion?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Is there anyone in the audience that has any business to bring before the council?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Joe Cavalero. I reside at 303 South Fifth Street, and have come to talk about the issue of the proposed driveway or off-street parking at 501 East Broadway at Denise Abel's Beauty Shop. It's come to my attention that the driveway was, or I should say, the right-of-way was paved, apparently at the approval of a city official. Now, these people have received the notice that what they have done is not in accordance with the code, and has now been referred to the planning commission. I guess my question is, why was it okayed in the first place instead of referred to the planning commission as it should have been? Because this situation is not unsimilar to the dentist's office on Third and Broadway, Dr. Panko, forgive me if I'm pronouncing that correctly, and her husband, John Ferrello. What is the difference in this situation with the beauty shop versus the doctor's office?
The difference is, at the time that Dr. Panko requested that, we did not have ordinance in regards to the use of the right-of-way.
I would differ with you on that, but, okay.
That was not, that was not in place at that time.
I believe it was, but, and it is in place now with regards to this situation.
It is in place now.
It was then.
And if a city employee or city official advised them that it was okay for them to do that, that city official was in error.
For a second time.
That is not the procedure. The procedure is that they have to petition the council to refer it to the planning commission. The planning commission makes a recommendation back to the council, and at that time, the council will vote to see if they go along with the use of it.
And I agree with you.
Yes.
The other part I don't agree with is, with the dentist's office, the code was in place and has been in place with regards to referral too. In both instances, it was not done. We suffered a consequence with the dentist's office, and now we're going through the same situation with this piece of property. This was done, and after the fact, as with the dentist's office, it's come to the council's attention that something wasn't appropriate. Why wasn't it addressed according to what the code specifies?
Because apparently, a city official erred and did not go by the code. We are investigating that to find out why that happened.
But with two situations in such close proximity to each other, I find it very difficult to understand why this would have occurred, when one situation was obviously a disaster, and now another situation has occurred very similar to the first.
I find it very difficult to understand why a city official would tell him to do that once an ordinance was in place.
Two city officials...
The ordinance was not in place at the time that the doctor...
I beg to differ with you, it was. But now we've got a second situation with a very similar problem that's going to look like, and result in, unfortunately, perhaps, some repercussions on the city because someone wasn't paying attention to the code. I find it very difficult to believe that two situations, within a matter of six months to eight months, a year at the most, would have occurred very similarly, and nobody's paying attention.
That's why we're...
And it was done. Now it's going to be undone like the first situation. Who's going to pay that cost?
We are investigating to find out why the city official misrepresented the procedure. That is what we're trying to do.
Check the code, Mr. Mayor. That should have gone to planning from the very beginning.
Well, I know it should have, but it's got to be referred to planning from the council.
Then maybe you better educate some of your city officials as to what the procedure is.
That is the point.
For the second time, for the second time.
This city official this time was not the one who was involved the first time.
I know that. I know who was involved the first time, but it's happened twice.
That's right. It has happened twice, but only once since that ordinance was put in place, because the ordinance...
I beg to differ with you, Mr. Mayor.
The right-of-way ordinance was put in place after the Panko incident took place, because there was nothing on the books prior to that.
I beg to differ with you.
Joe, are you basically saying that neither the books means sending it to the planning commission? Is that what you mean by it already being a law?
Any situation of this nature, to the best of my recollection, from when I was Alderman, should have initially been referred to the planning commission.
Right.
In the first instance and in this instance. In neither instance was it referred to the planning commission.
I agree with you.
Somebody isn't watching the store.
I agree. And we are investigating to find out why this happened.
There shouldn't be much of an investigation, just read the codes.
Just read the codes, but we need to know, we have to take depositions as to what was said to whom.
Doesn't really make much difference what was said to whom. The point is, the codes say, you don't do it unless you go to planning.
That's right.
Period, end quote.
That's right, but if a city employee misleads somebody...
Yeah, you're looking for a lawsuit.
Does not give them the correct information, then there's the possibility of a lawsuit.
Again.
That's why people have to be on their toes, have to know what's going on, and we have to find out why this information was given to the people to start with, and that is why we're conducting an investigation.
Mr. Abel, would you like to say anything in this matter?
There is one.
All right. I was approached by the owner of the shop, and she was quite dismayed to find out that this had happened, because she called me to ask me, as a neighbor, was told that if you ask people within the proximity of 100 feet of your store or your operation, whether it was okay. I said, frankly, I really don't care, but that's not the issue. The issue is, the dentist's office couldn't do it, why do you think you can do it? I advised her of that, and I told her to be cautious. Apparently, they called someone in the city, in the zoning department, who came up and said, oh yeah, go right ahead. I don't understand how that could have happened.
Neither do I.
That's interesting.
I am questioning the competence of some people.
And well, you should, because this could be a second lawsuit on the city.
I understand this.
And this will open a Pandora's box. I have nothing against businesses wanting to give appropriate parking to their customers. It's unfortunate, though, because of the way the planning went in the city over the years past, that if you do that in one instance, you're going to have blacktop all over the city. Okay, thanks for your time.
Sure. Anyone else? Anyone on the council?
Well, certainly, the mayor and city clerk, Joe Tito, have certainly thanked all the people that have made this day possible, so I haven't got much to say, but I certainly want to recognize Joe, too. I think this is probably the best that we've ever had. I think it was very thorough, very well organized, and I think everyone did a great job. I also want to bring to everyone's attention that last Wednesday, the city of Fulton award ceremony was held, and this award ceremony, this is the fourth year, and I want to thank Chief Spawn and Chief Correa for the tremendous program that they put on in recognizing the fire department, the police department, a lot of other departments, people in our community, mentors, ambulance service, and of course, the Yalx Club, who got recognized for their participation in youth activities, in the Dare Program, in the May Day, in the Yalx Government Day. So once again, the Yalx deserve that thank you. But obviously, there was, I had no idea, I've been to all four of them, and until you sat in on one of those ceremonies, you have no idea what's involved with operating the city on a day-to-day basis to keep it safe, and the heroic things that our firemen do, the policemen do, and just regular citizens that save lives over the last year. I was just amazed as I sat there to hear, and as I say, this is the fourth year, but it's just amazing what is happening on a day-to-day basis, so I want to thank all those people. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Weston.
I always have to follow Alderman Weston, you know, he's just in that first ward, I'm in the second ward.
Left to right.
I just simply went to thank all the students that participated in today's event, and I hope that all of you gain some kind of experience. I also want to thank everybody from the Yalx Club. Also, I want to thank Mr. Fellow Mayor Alden, the chairman of the social studies department, and Mr. Moore, that teaches over there in government class. I think they did a super job, everybody. Thank you.
I just would like to thank the Yalx for their fine dinner, and to thank the students for participating in the government day.
I've actually got some work to do. On Academy Street, could we get a slow children playing sign for eastbound traffic between Sixth and Seventh, and as you go over the hill, there are a whole bunch of kids that live on that block, and one of them got hit by a car a while back.
Eastbound?
Eastbound on Academy. Really, if you put the sign on top of the hill between Fifth and Sixth, it should slow people down for between Sixth and Seventh.
The school zone doesn't go up Academy at all, does it?
No, the school zone doesn't go up that way. It only goes down Seventh Street. All right. Also, on Buffalo Street, between Third and Fourth, it's westbound only, really westbound between Second and Fourth. The one-way sign is marked at both the intersection of Third and Buffalo and Fourth and Buffalo, but if you're parked at the church and you come out of their parking lot, you might be inclined to turn left because you can't see where the sign is. Could we get another one-way sign in the middle of the block there? There was an accident about a month ago at the corner of Fourth and Buffalo. Somebody going the wrong way down Buffalo.
It would be on the south side.
It'd be on the south side of the street. This one isn't a sign, but on one block, there are three houses in a row that each have either five or six dogs. Every time a car door slams, one dog gets going, and then you get one dog barking, they all bark. There's a way to reprint in the newspaper. I know about a month or so ago, we printed up what the rules were if your dog went in somebody else's yard. There's a way to print what the law is if your dog barks all night, like what the fine is. Could we get that in the paper? Soon. And finally, not to pick any fights, but Article 177-54 of the city charter dictating right-of-way usage was adopted October 6th, 1998, four and a half months after the dentist dug up her yard. I just wanted that noted.
I had a couple of things I wanted to say. Some time ago, and I think it was Alderman Thompson, I'm not sure, I may be wrong, asked for a traffic study on Utica and Keuga Street, which are one-way streets, and I think it was done under request of the Chamber of Commerce to study and see if they could abolish their one-way streets, but I've talked to Alderman Thompson, and we never got that report back what the recommendation was.
It was done for the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, and I've had some people inquiring about it since...
Just had to be six or nine months ago.
Yeah, it was quite a long time. I remember when it happened, I just can't remember exactly when.
Is there a mantra here?
Yeah. I'd like to know what the recommendation was, because it's just being revisited. One other thing I'd like to say, I've been listening to this thing on the right-of-ways, and when you're dealing with people, I've been in the spot the mayor's in, and the mayor gets blamed for everything that everybody does, right or wrong. Mostly wrong, never right. But the right-of-ways are a real tough situation, because our city is old, it was laid out, if you look at our homes in some of the areas, they're posted stamp lots, most of them are built on the city right-of-way, and there's very few homes in the city. At one time or another, if you drive around the neighborhoods, if on a Sunday, people have company, that somebody's not parked in the right-of-way, they may not be in the road, but they're in the city right-of-way. And probably, if you could apply the law to the letter, if some people could see it, there's not too many of us that are in compliance 100% of the time, you're wrong, mainly because we probably couldn't keep our homes or half the businesses if we were. If you go into Fifth Ward with the Sixth Ward and the Fifth Ward border, we have Marbuto Store, my wife and I have been shopping there 31 years, and they have parked on the right-of-way for the 31 years we've been married, and long before that. It's reasonable to want to try to change things and make it so our city has more green space and looks better, but if you come into Sixth Ward, we could probably take 30% of the homes down there and get rid of them, or just tell people they could live there without cars. That's not reasonable. I had, about three or four years ago, with different code people, and one code person that's in this office now, there was four there, and there's two now, one code individual told a person in my ward that they could put a swimming pool up, it was on a corner lot, issued a permit, this individual paid for the permit, and another code individual that didn't quite agree with them observed while the pool was put up, the individual paid money, financed the pool, and when the pool was all up, one of the other code individuals went and cited her and said, you've got to take the pool down. Now, who's right and who's wrong? Somehow, we can't lose sight of the fact that everyone that's up here, and everyone that works for the city, are working for the people that own the homes and the property. This isn't for politics, or to embarrass the mayor or anyone else. Buck Stafford, or Don Bullard, or Ron Woodward, or Vern Jerome, or Percy Patrick, whoever's here, is, can I go back in the life of every employee that works for the city and change the way they were raised? And basically, that's part of what the problem is. They see it the way they see it. It might not always be right. You got a situation here with the dentist, and you had a new mayor, and he took people at their word, and he got burnt, and he was mad not to come out and say, hey, I made a mistake, and we had to change something. This is another deal. If that employee should have said to Danny Abel, you've got to refer that to the council. The mayor had no idea that this happened. Anybody with half a brain would know that. How would you know everybody that come in this building every day of the week and ask a city employee something? So I think that what's got to rule here is a little intelligence, and this in a little common sense, this city right-of-way thing is going to be revisited an awful lot of times through this administration and whoever else comes along, because the plain, simple fact of the matter is, they're telling people to do what they can do with their property, whether it be an individual homeowner or a business, and people don't like that. And I can tell you from sitting here for a lot of years, anybody will tell you they don't care what you do down there, just don't do it here. Okay? So I think we need to loosen up a little bit and take a look at these things a little bit easier, and I do think we need to look at the neighborhoods, and I think it's a great idea that we send everything to the planning commission, because they're a great help to us. But one thing that needs to be understood, the planning commission is an advisory agency. The common council of this city is the only one that has legislative authority. The planning commission does not. The zoning board of appeals does, to a certain extent. The council's the only one that has the authority, so ultimately, whatever happens, they can say, we don't think this guy should have this, and we could say, yeah, he does, and he gets it. We could say, we think he should have it, or they could say that, and we could say, no, and he wouldn't get it. So I think that cooler heads need to prevail, and I don't think that we should have personal attacks on things like this, because it's going to happen again next week, and it's going to happen again next month. And Your Honor, that's all I have to say, and I just wish that when the people would be a little more understanding, when we grapple with things to try to make the city better, we're not always going to hit it, and tell you, well, we're lucky if we hit it half the time, but we're out here trying, and probably 75% of the people in the city aren't willing to try. Thank you.
Do any of call? Mr. Corrigan?
Yes, I have one thing. As we have two street sweepers in the city, one of whom that does a pretty good job of picking up the names that are on the street, the other one does a good job of moving it around. We've been getting quite a few calls in City Hall about the conditions of our street, and we really need sweepers to do the job properly, especially in the spring. The cost of a new sweeper is approximately $130,000, which I'm not proposing that we purchase at this time. purchase at this time, but we have an opportunity, I had Buck Graham checking around, to rent the street sweeper for a month, another good one, which if we could have that for a month, we could adequately clean the streets this spring. So what I'd like to propose is that we rent this sweeper for one month, so we can get all the wards cleaned, and have Rob call, and your ward needs some attention, and Harley has called. You know, I think this is a good solution. These machines are high maintenance, and maybe we really don't want to purchase additional machines and just rent them, because they just, you know, you can't use them one year and one year. And the one that does not do a good job, we put a lot of maintenance dollars into it that still does the same thing, so that would be my proposal.
We will need a transfer from contingency to do that. Do we hear a motion?
I'll move it.
How much is, how much is gonna be the rental cost?
$8,000 for one month.
So the motion is...
Yeah, basically, the city chairman transferred $8,000 from the contingent account to the DPW account, the amount of $8,000, for the purpose of the rental of the sweeper.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
John? What are we gonna do with the old sweeper?
We're gonna trade it in? Those are fairly good jobs, there's not a lot of dirt on the street.
Do any of the students that participated in the program today wish to say anything at this time? Good, bad, or indifferent? This is your chance.
How's everything look up there, Judge?
I'd just like to thank everybody for having us here today. I think we've all enjoyed ourselves and had a great time. The meal was great, thank you. And I hope that other students get to do this in the future, because we had a great time, and I think we all learned a lot. Thank you.
Outicate a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Everybody sort of sit here, because the Yalx want a pitcher. See if you could stay seated, please.